The solicitor told me at the end of that conversation was that I should write a report and give it to the county commissioners and report exactly what I know. That I've been over there, I've seen multiple buildings on the property, but I don't know whether or not someone is living there. I don't have proof of anyone living there. So I said to the county commissioner I need to take that to the planning commission first. If he was thinking on it. And then present the report with any changes you might have. So that was the one issue. The other one, I think, also needs to be discussed in more detail is the... Also in Millford, it was brought up that there's RVs parked on some lands that used... I understand it used to be a mobile home park. Now the RVs are parked there and I did see them. There were three in a row, brand-new RVs. There was a car there with an Arkansas license plate. So I'm jumping to conclusions that they're probably gas-related. And then I also talked to attorney D. Witt about, was it Susquehanna or Oakland Borough? I can't remember which one, but one...
Well, it involves Oakland Township, I guess.
Oakland Township.
Oakland Borough and...
Okay. And the fact that RVs... I seen them. I was out to a meeting a week and a half ago in Millford Township. And down in Lawton, where they sell mobile homes, there's now pretty much just a, almost a campground going down there. They were having a bonfire the night that I drove past a bunch of RVs. And I asked the township supervisor whether they had a permit and he didn't know. But I did talk to COG and they said yes, that they gave them sewer permits down there in Lawton. So, okay. What to do about RVs parked on lands maybe on someone's house property that's not intended to be a campground with recreation and things like that? They're looking for a place to live because they're here working with the gas industry. So what do we do about that?
I wonder what they're doing.
And sewage is up to the townships. As I mentioned, the one township supervisor I talked to about townships...
Excuse me, gentlemen. You want a sign, please? Here for you two.
Just to... Many of them are self-contained.
Yeah. But where do they dump them? Do they have a dump?
They have the sanitation company.
I can't do anything about it. I tried. Sorry.
The sanitation company comes around like Toys 'R' Us or something. Because they have sixty young holding tanks on campus.
See, the thing is, our ordinance says, I can't quote it, but it talks about land that is primarily a campground. The definition of campground is attractive land or a portion thereof primarily used to provide sites for the temporary use of tents or recreation vehicle for camping purposes with a charge for leasing, renting, or occupancy of such space. All campgrounds and recreational vehicle parks shall be considered recreational subdivision or land development. I don't know that that's what they're doing. They're looking... We also have in the ordinance provisions for what's it called? A minor land development. Say somebody has a farm, a house on that property, and they want to hire somebody and house that person on their farm. They might put a mobile home on that land. We treat that as what we call minor land development. Still require a plan, show where the house is, where the mobile home is going to be, the access to it, driveway from it, what they're going to do about sewage. That's basically it. But it does require a plan to run through the planning commission. I was wondering if we couldn't do that similar type of thing for RVs parked on, you know, somebody's land. Another thought that was raised here tonight was possibly a township or municipality could pass an ordinance or something that required a permit to do so, which would also probably include sewage. We're talking about sewage. And they might charge a little fee for that. You know, thereby making a little bit of money. Not going to be a lot, but that's a possibility too.
I think everyone could police their own area.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing. Eleanor and I are two people in the office. We are inundated with gas stuff. I mean, that's all I do all day is gas-related stuff. Eleanor handles all the other subdivisions, which there have become a lot. We don't go out driving around the county looking for, you know, looking for people putting RVs on the land. We just don't have the time. We're two of us. That's it.
Do you think maybe we should be looking through our areas? Excuse my voice.
That's why you're with me.
Can we be your eyes and ears?
I think all that stuff basically, like, especially the stuff in Millford Borough, is violating their zoning ordinance.
Right. Yeah.
I think, you know, they're going to have to start legal action against these people. And I don't think that's our position. I think that's...
No, I don't think...
The zoning...
I don't think that's our position at all.
First of all, we don't have any funds to do it. We don't have our own funds. We're relying on the company.
And if the property owner's letting an RV park on his property, then I think he should be assessed for the school district tax and everything. These school districts can use that money.
Because the local municipality is responsible for sewage. And that's probably where it will be decided eventually in the court.
I guess the question, what, again, that indicates, seems to indicate in subdivision ordinance if there are two or more lots, it constitutes a recreational vehicle subdivision.
Two or more sites.
Two or more sites. Yeah. So is that... Well, it says lots over here, I think.
Yeah, that's what it...
But, you know, but...
The campground says lots.
In any event, does that mean two RVs? What are we talking about? And, you know, then do you have to meet all the requirements of a recreational subdivision? Roads, lighting, recreational areas?
Community sewage is a big one. That is a big expense.
Community sewage? All of those requirements for two RVs and a property?
You become a water company. So what may happen is you'll have people sneaking them in rather than doing it, according to the ordinance.
What did the solicitor say?
He said you, the commission has to decide. That's all I got.
Well, I think it should be on the township. I don't think... That's my one opinion. I think there should be a township issue. This can be controlled at the township. This is exciting so far.
Why would they have zoning?
They do have zoning, yeah. And that was the first thing the county solicitor said to me. Where's their zoning officer? As far as the Millford Borough.
Well, some of them built one township down there. They don't have zoning. They told the property owner, you can't have any RVs here in the, on your property in the municipality. But they produced no evidence, no ordinance or anything. They just gave them a copy of the old subdivision ordinance. I think it was a 1995 one and said, here, you know, this prohibits them altogether. It doesn't, obviously, but, you know, it's still, it's still an issue right here. How they're going to handle it. I think you've got two or more.
What about the, you know, as an attorney, where it says primarily used or... End of definition of campground? Because that was one of my questions. The ordinance says attractive land or portion thereof primarily used. Now, do we go with the assessed, the assessment on that line? Where it's assessed as a single-family home rather than a campground? Because there is, you know, there's a mobile home park assessment. There's a single-family dwelling assessment. If you have a house and you put an RV, let an RV park or two even out in your backyard, is that what's happening?
Does that, yeah. Does that mean you have a recreational vehicle park or campground and that you've got to comply with all the requirements?
Right. That's my question.
Or...
There's another thing that comes up there too. The gas workers lots of times are moving in and out.
Absolutely.
So is there a time limit?
It's temporary.
Yeah, it's all temporary. That's why the county should come up with a permit to make...
Realistically, Mike Garmiak is not here tonight. He's the Bluestone Gathering representative that comes to meetings once in a while. He was telling me last week that they had expected for this Bluestone Pipeline, Suspana Gathering Pipeline, they had expected originally three or 400 workers to come and do this. They may have thousands of workers coming to the area. Now, they are temporary, but they need housing. They need a place to stay. Like it or not, they're up here and they're going to be working in our area. They're going to need a place to stay. So you're going to have this RVs in the backyard.
I mean, there are benefits. But I am, you know, the ones that I've spoken to, you know, tell me they spend their money locally.
Yeah.
Obviously, for whatever reason, maybe because they work so many hours, that they're not going to travel. But they're not getting here. There is an asset. There is a value to our area for that economically.
They're not coming to here as a destination, a recreation destination.
Yeah.
Did you ever hear about Dr. Carson Helfrich?
Yeah, yeah.
Temporary...
He kind of agreed with me with why don't we handle it as a land development, minor land development. Now, that's... Carson Helfrich is the consultant that helped us with our ordinance over the years.
But how are we going to handle it? We don't know. If they don't come to us for...
The townships were...
For provision, then the township, if they... The townships have a police department and everything. They can enforce that themselves.
But the townships are going to enforce your ordinance?
No, no, not our ordinance. The township.
Because township...
Like in Millford Borough. There's an issue right now with Millford Borough.
When I'm talking about a township where they have no ordinance whatsoever.
That's where we've always said, like, that you should lobby for ordinance. The ordinance is going to help everybody. That would alleviate a lot of the problems that come here. If every township, if it was mandatory or if you had an ordinance, you wouldn't have junk cars next to your property or anything like that. That can be handled. I've seen it handled. I lived 30 years in Danville. They had an ordinance in that Danville area of Ull. But it, and it's enforced.
Well, I guess the person needs to know that puts two RVs, say puts two RVs on their property, do I need to come to the planning commission and get approval for subdivision or land development?
If the municipalities had a, well, they have a building permit ordinance. I don't know whether it would cover, you know, a temporary RV or not. But, you know, similar to COG, if COG, somebody goes to COG for a building permit, an occupancy permit or sewer permit, Bill Shigo, the building permit officer, will send him, will send the people to us or call me or say, is this something that needs an approval? So that works pretty well. If that type of thing could happen at the township level, if somebody, you know, the township supervisors and borough council people know their areas. They go out and they travel roads every day. If they see something going on and they say, hey, you need a, you know, our township requires a permit, say. That would be one way of policing it. And then if the planning commission wanted a land development plan approved, then they have to submit plan here. But, you know, if you're saying the townships could police it, they're out there anyway.
So you're, are you saying that, say, again, somebody puts two RVs on the property? And I don't know the answer to this question. Does it become a recreational vehicle park such that you have to meet all the other requirements? The roadways, the lighting, buffer, the lot size?
Actually, actually, they, if you have up to five, you don't have to have a lighting and all of this.
Where does it say that? That's, I'm looking at... Here it defines recreational vehicle park as two... Does that mean dividing them physically into two or more lots? Or just putting two RVs on your property? Is that a... Subdivision?
You do have two different...
Campgrounds already, most sites already have two.
So you see, point, that's the same line. Family would stay at the...
It's a restaurant.
A lot of people do that. They live in Florida in the winter time, Florida lives in the summer time. And then there were gas workers came in there for the summer with RVs. So self-contained units. And when their job was done, you're moving on. Earl Pittsburgh or someplace. Another part. But that part has been planned and approved and has all of the...
We could do something like that with, you know, our townships. It has to be an approved park or by our ordinance that somebody's putting something on the property other than what's approved.
Then they have to get through the process of getting approved.
Yeah, then they have to...
How do we force them to do that?
Well, if they're not in an approved, if they're not in an approved campground, then each township has to get there.
Well, that's what I was getting at. Was it township or, you know, some boroughs, yeah, them are ours.
If there's a complaint in the borough of, I'm just going to use Millford because we let Millford's police department handle that. If somebody sees two RVs parked up in a field someplace, it has to be in an approved. If they have an RV, they have to be in an approved campground.
Why do you say two RVs?
Now that we were talking to RVs.
The subdivision ordinance indicates two lots constitute a...
I had two lots, the house and one RV, there's two.
Yeah. So if you got more than one RV, are you subject to the only requirements of the recreational vehicle campground? I don't know.
But then that would be a trick thing there when you say lots. A lot with a site on it, another site on it.
Survey. The minimal size, the lots with size, does it have to be one or a lot?
Oh, I think of a RV parking on a site, not necessarily on a lot, a lot. If you want to bring a RV in and put it on somebody else's property, that's just a site, not necessarily, you don't own a lot.
I think there's a conflict in the, the ordinance where it refers to a mobile home park, the lots in the mobile home park, and we're using it as to define a survey lot.
This is the, this recreational sub, this is in Article 2 definitions. Recreational subdivision or land development. Division or re-division of a lot, tract, or parcel of land by any means into two or more lots, tracts, or parcels of land, along changes in existing lot lines for the purpose, whether immediate or future, of lease, rent, sale, or transfer of ownership by a site, for occupancy by gravel trailers, truck camper, camper trailers, et cetera. And it goes on to speak of campgrounds, RV parks. And then that's, you know, then it goes on to the precise requirements for such a park. So, you know, again, if you've got two, you've got your house on a lot, you've got some RVs, whether it's one or two, on a separate piece of your property, is that a recreational subdivision or land development? It appeared, I don't know. And you brought up the issue of the primary purpose. The primary purpose. But it defines the campsite, I think, recreational vehicle campsite. Primary purpose. A campground, a recreational vehicle park, the primary purpose. But that's the primary purpose. You know?
You can change the ordinance.
Do they have a separate section?
Approved, but then the question is, approved, that's what?
As a campground.
With the community sewage and handy water.
And then these that are self-contained then? Which is what they are. They're self-contained. If they'd be, you know, pumped out now, they would have to be connected into a community sewage system. That could get expensive. I'm saying if you just have two RVs or one RV, you're not, two, let's say, you're not going to put a, I mean, a community sewage system. The cost and the other requirements as well. You're going to make someone meet all these other requirements, which are... It would make probably no economic sense then to have.
Well, at least you can control it then. You know, say somebody parks an RV up in a farmer's field and the tanks get full and that hospital sanitation can't come right now and pump it. What do you think they're going to do? They're going to open the valve up and it's going to go on the field?
Well, that's a legal, there's a sewage facility that.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think it should, I, if it's an issue, I think you've got to control it. And the only way to control it would be to have, you'll talk to the solicitor, our solicitor, and see if that's something, keep working with us. We'll try to get that passed that day. If you're going to have an RV and people are going to live in it, then it's got to be in an RV park. However you wanted to find the RV park.
Well, they just need some guidance if they say, yeah, you're being told by the township, they're totally prohibited, you know? The township's got no ordinance whatsoever, frankly.
Does the township have a holding tank ordinance?
I don't know.
Not as far as I know.
He went to the township.
Yeah, there was none as far as...
All they produced was an old copy, 1995 copy of your ordinance.
Where are you, what township?
Oakland Township.
Oakland.
So maybe if temporary things, a holding tank would suffice as a community system.
Which I did very well, holding tank down there for the one, just in case it's abused. They've opened it down there. But if they haven't had use, if they've always been down there, two weeks, they don't it and they get no problem.
Technically, they're not supposed to use unless the township has a holding tank ordinance.
Yeah.
But they say they have, in my mind, they should be approved and everything. And, you know, Bill Swallow, his group of people should get lots approved and the tank that's gone in.
Oakland. I mean, you're talking the holding tank that's part of the unit itself, the RV.
Yeah, somebody should be in effect. It shouldn't be just somebody bringing the tank down and putting it in the ground.
Which the campers themselves, like I say, have their own sixty-year-old holding tank.
I don't know what they...
Yeah, there's sixty-year-olds.
They get filled up pretty fast.
Actually, there was only one person in there and they don't even have to fill them in two weeks when they get done. Because when they come there, they shower at night and they go to bed. And they go back and forth. They work 12 hours a day. They're hardly up yet. You know, and when they come back, they lay their head down, they go to bed, and they get up in the morning. They're up and gone by five, six o'clock in the morning. They rack off the field. And they're working now and from nine to eleven o'clock in the morning.
Well, see, if we put something in effect here, it's got to be, we just can't be for those particular people. We've got to have it for anybody that's...
We got to, everybody's got to be covered with every good... We're going to talk with the solicitor and let the solicitor...
As the solicitor said, the planning commission has to determine how to interpret the ordinance. It's already in the ordinance. The ordinance says if you have an RV, you have that campground. Is that what you want, yes? Is that how you want to interpret it for this instance?
I would say yes.
Well, isn't that an awful lot of people that park RVs on their own property for family members when they come?
Yes, they do.
How are we, how are you going to police it? How are you going to take care of, you know...
If you have relatives visiting out, come out of town and they bring their RV and park it in your driveway?
I'd say no. I mean, that's an issue, Mike. It's an issue now.
And I understand zoning, if you're a presidential leader and I would set a mobile park there. I understand that.
If townships all had their own zoning, I think it could eliminate a lot of these problems. But at four something, you're going to be sitting right back here again amongst houses, amongst nots.
But you guys do have to determine whether this, the two, I think somehow determine whether the two RVs on the property constitute and are going to be required to comply with all the requirements of the recreational park subdivision or, or is it going to be a minor subdivision? But what's your position? I'm not saying you have to decide now. I'm just saying at some point in time.
Yeah. The limiting factor is going to be Act 537. Depending on how big that subsidy system is or the age of it, if it's pre-72, they may not even be able to hook into it unless they have the tanks to collect the sewage.
Well, the ordinance says the campground requires a community sewage. So it doesn't matter what they have. They've got to put in a community sewage system now. If they only have an RV there.
With, on the three-lane and then with the golfer, all that sewage comes down to us and we're back. We pretty much see a click and, because I know Dorothy's getting updates all the time for the trailer park on the three-lane because they're moving in and out.
All right. We're going to start to meet. We have, we want to do this one real quick.
Up to you.
All right, Troy. Railway West and Paulston Borough requesting a waiver of parking setback.
Do you have pictures, videos?
Okay.
All right, I have two sets of pictures of some other businesses in town. And I have some drawings here. I have three sets of drawings and basically, just throw them out here in front of you. These are very preliminary and before we get too far into our development of the...
These are very preliminary and before we get too far into our development of the site, I wanted to ask your opinion about parking lot setbacks. All right, the top drawing is showing basically the existing lot there. And those photographs are not of the lot that I'm talking about. Basically, your ordinance has a requirement for the number of parking spaces for a restaurant. And on this lot, we're looking at needing about twenty-two spaces for the size restaurant they're planning to put in here. This is located at the intersection of Franklin Street and Pine Street in Alstead, Alstead Borough. Currently, it's a vacant lot and there's a fifteen-foot setback required for parking spaces. Section seven oh six point nine says fifteen-foot setback. All right, on this lot, it's a relatively small lot and we're going to be, this is not a formal submission tonight, but in the future, we're going to make a submission. And I'm looking to find out if you're amenable to waiving the fifteen-foot setback for the parking spaces because it would impinge on the number of spaces that we could put on the lot.
I'm going to tell you right up front, no. We didn't know these, I don't know when they were built. I don't know if there was ever plans on these, but that's our ordinance right now. And as far as I'm concerned, you've got to meet the setback. We've had, we had, we had a man that came in from over here on Lake Montrose. I forget the name of the guy, so, Ed Luca Angelo. He wanted, if we didn't approve that, as far as I'm concerned, no. You don't have to go any further. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but as far as.
Well, I'd like to have the opportunity to point some things out. The, the rest of the businesses in town operate right up to the edge of the property on all sides of this lot. The public library, the churches, the post office, the automotive repair shops, and the bank. All in Alstead Park and the funeral home, all parked right up against the line and there's no, in fact, even the library in the borough building has no.
I, I don't know, I don't know when they were built or anything like that.
I understand that.
The question before is the building setback line?
No, it's not the building setback, it's the parking setback line.
You have parking setback, Dorothy?
Um, section seven oh six.
Well, I just wanted to muddy things right up by saying, we have a plan in here for this hotel right on the edge of town where all the parking is in the perimeter of the thing and it's been approved by this commission. Once you set a precedent like that. Got all the pictures of other ones around here, nobody's challenged or requested.
How many parking spaces are required for this size building?
Twenty-two.
So you've got eighteen.
Eighteen would be reduced, with, using the setback, it only allows us to have eighteen and no loading and unloading zone. Drawing number three in this pack is positioning the parking spaces a little bit closer to the edge of the property lines and it allows us to have a loading and unloading zone and meet the number of parking spaces. There is a sidewalk around along Franklin and Pine Streets, which would not be infringed upon. And I think it would work out well without any reduction in, without reduction in any capacity of aesthetics or anything along those lines. So there are provisions in the ordinance for requesting a variance. And rather than moving through that in a more formal way, seeking the opinion of the, of the commission, one of those spaces will need to be made as a handicap or two, which is not shown on there. So it's consistent with everything else up and down Franklin Street, Pine Street, and be consistent with the rest of the community. It's my understanding that the, uh, the borough is favorable towards putting this facility in and utilizing that lot for something other than a rundown, broken down house, which has been since your move.
What's the board think?
If you allow that parking, that would mean that, that you'd have more runoff.
Well, that's a separate issue that could be addressed.
How would you address it?
By provision of detention facilities. When you say more runoff, your ordinance requires the number of parking spaces that we have. If you were to say reduce the number of spaces, then we could reduce the runoff in that regard. So is there consideration for that?
Well, we didn't make the size of the lot. You came to the size of the lot, it's all the stuff. But, but the town has to be careful about stormwater. And that's what my concern is.
Right.
How would you address it?
I would provide additional detention and retention facilities on the lot. Subsurface retention, which would encourage groundwater infiltration. The soil at that site is sandy and gravelly and it was, it's amenable to that procedure.
That's what I'm looking.
Yeah, but you have a feeling about the.
Fortunately, it's in the river valley where it would work.
You feel the same way as you would a setback? That's the problem, don't you start?
Yes.
What if you put a line of lot parking right down here? Will they still be able to back out? You'd probably get three or four months. It's not up to me to design it.
Well, I, I've looked at several different designs and by maneuvering that parking all different ways and actually putting the driveway on Franklin Street instead of Pine Street, you still run into the same situation where in order to make safe turning movements, it would be better for those parking spaces to be further away from each other than, rather than closer. And putting them down in the center increases the amount of, well, instead of having common space in the center, which is dual purpose for both rows of parking, we have to have driveway along the outer edges of it, which would.
Make a movement of building when you're in more parking spots. They could relocate the buildings.
Well, we move the building all around in different places and, uh, and it all results in the same effect. And that is that, it's, I could come up with five different scenarios and we still face the same problems. By keeping those parking spaces shoved towards the center of the setback, it's taking a lot that's usable to making it unusable for such a facility. And I, I understand that the planning commission and comprehensive plans encourage the development of property that's already been used within the boroughs and townships rather than saying, well, we can't, we can't build this here, let's break some new ground outside of town where we have more room. I think that's less desirable, there's other considerations here.
So what's next to this property? Is there another area for parking? They could make an agreement that one of the other landlord owners around there, they, they use, you use some of their parking spaces.
Well, on the, on the north side is a church with a cemetery. They don't have any actual parking. On the east side is a small telephone company building. Across the street is a, the library, they don't park. The library doesn't have parking anyway. They just park along the street.
How about that church? What that church would get?
Across the other side is a Baptist church, Alstead Baptist Church, on the opposite side of Pine Street.
Be able to enter into some kind of agreement with them that, other than the church hours that you'd use or you probably would, that restaurant wouldn't be in operation during the church hours, would it?
I believe it would be.
Oh, would we?
Gosh, this is pretty.
That's process. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, it's going on that side.
Could we give a variance on the number of parking spots as opposed to setback? I've come twenty here, I think you said you need twenty-two.
A parking, the number of parking. Yeah, that would be another alternative.
Five, six, seven, eight, and twelve.
How many, if you know, how many seats a restaurant has?
Uh, I don't know how many seats are in there. We looked at the square footage of the.
Yeah.
Space, it's fifty square feet, there's, I think it's fifty square feet, is it one parking space required? One parking space for every fifty square feet of floor area. So we need, actually we need twenty-two.
And so you can't squeeze two more in sometimes.
No. Now, the fifteen-foot setback just basically takes away several, several spaces. Most notably, the loading zone that's shown on drawing three along Franklin Avenue. By having that parking setback, if this were to go through, the owners decide they want to pursue it, it's going to create a situation that's a perpetual difficulty for them. And there's no upside to it. There's no redeeming factor to have that setback in there. So that's why I'm looking for the variance. If there's a way to avoid asking for a variance on that, we would just pursue that without coming to you in a fashion.
What about the size of the parking spaces? Is it twenty?
Yes. This one has no.
It looks like the setback, parking setback is on the side of the church where it's a problem.
Well, there's a slope there as well, so.
I could see if this was a property, a developed property here, but it's a street. It's fifteen feet between the street. It's no use, it's just a. Just don't see where the setback enters in the, conforming, it conforms with the ordinance that written, that written, that says that it enhances anything about the design of this proposal to a rest. Just drop, brought that back there. What's this, what, what was the purpose? Moving that back in, say, another fifteen feet? What does that do for this road? It's a piece of land there. I could see if there was maybe a man's house right here.
John, what do you think, what do you want to do?
I'd be more willing to say do a variance on the number of parking lot spaces. And we're not violating that setback requirement settingly precedent there unless we've already done it toward the Frank, it says we have.
The conversation about the building, it does look like it could move something. Is that going to help it? If it did, would you, could you pick up at least one more parking space?
No, that, that building can move up and, as you're looking at your plan, it could move towards me a couple of feet or towards you two or three feet, but that's, that's as far as it can go.
It looks like it's sort of copped in there, is that?
Well, the reason it's copped in there is because of the setback on the one property line, which twenty-foot setback in town like that for a facility is quite generous as well.
We've got to start the meeting.
Well, the only thing we could do tonight would be to say, you know, come back with the plan, because we can't make any decisions tonight anyway, so, on this, on this plan. So come back with whatever he's requesting and, you know, let's take a look at it.
If you can live with what John says, the problem solved.
Well, what I'll do is I'll look at the turning movements of vehicles using these parking spaces. The, uh, drawing number two is what is using those setbacks and we have thirty feet between the rows of cars and on that drawing that you're looking at.
Can we get two right there? Is that a one? Two right, not only.
Oh, maybe turn that a little bit. Even this one, you could turn a little bit.
Well, you can't, you don't have enough space.
You don't have room for two openings.
Yeah.
Even if you backed out into that right wing.
I was just wondering what the slope is at that exit.
Well, there's, that's a, that's a travel lane to get in and out of a property. You wouldn't be using it, you'd be comparing, you would be parking it, you'd be backing it in.
I'd be an idea of what you.
Can you back out parking?
Even if you had, couldn't you, couldn't you control the elevation?
We might be able to squeeze one more in on the side.
I need one.
Yeah.
Got to give me here two.
However, um, this space in here, thirty feet between these, right in front of that building, what it's going to do is it's going to create a hardship that I, in my opinion, is unnecessary for this facility and something they're going to have to deal with perpetually for, in order to achieve something that really doesn't give us, it's not as though we're parking up against a, um, a private residence or anything along, anything of that nature. It's, it's basically a setback, they're disabled having a setback. Pretty much nothing more. So I will revise these plans and show you some turning movements on it and update these and now.
Because if you have thirty cars there, when that was catered, when dinner was catered, everybody loved to have thirty cars in the parking lot all the time.
Okay, well, just go around the room here and mention who you are and why you're here. Ma'am, let's go with the first.
I'm June Lance Skinner, Montrose Borough Council.
Okay.
I'll confirm the other end, panel. Casual observer.
I'm Todd Schmidt, Fox Engineering.
Craig Benson, Vice Chair of Area Planning Commission.
Von Field, just observing.
Johnny Stinkles, just observing.
Sorry, tell me your...
Um, Harry Dunn, a taxi, living in Springfield. And I'm here to complain about the noise.
I'm Paul Carpech, I live in Springfield also, and I'm interested about the compressor stations.
I'm Vera Scroggins, and I'm here about noise and odors and compressor stations and also to observe.
Brett Jennings, Great Ben Burrow and the Halsted Great Ben Joint Sewer of Florida.
All right. Everybody should have got a copy of the communications. And, anybody? Oh, okay, I didn't see that. Everybody should have got a copy of the past minutes. Uh, does anybody have any questions or concerns? Now, this, this meeting right now, then we'll open it up to communications to everybody here. This is just the board members now that we're dealing with. Does anybody on the board have a problem or any question that concerns with the minutes from the last meeting? Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And if the previous meeting were approved, communications, the same thing. Everybody should have got a copy of those. Anybody have any questions or concerns, we'll address them at this time. A motion on the floor?
Another motion for approval of communication?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Communications are approved. Director's report, again, everybody should have got a copy of those. Anybody have any questions or concerns, we'll address them at this time. A motion on the floor to accept the director's report? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Director's report is approved. Deputy Director's report, same thing. Anybody have any questions or concerns, we'll address them at this time.
Will you approve this, chairman?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Deputy Director's report is approved. Old Business Subdivision and Land Development Review, there is none at this time. Reports finalized, conditional approval, no further action required. Jeffrey's Farm Incorporated, one lot, major sub-division, Harper's and Lennox Township Review, sewer waivers and municipal report forms approved, nine, twenty-eight, twelve.
That was a directly in the nation, right? Nope. It was conditional.
Yep, the conditions. Okay, New Business Subdivision and Land Development Review, the first one, you have that on the owner. Dorothy Gates, three lots, minor subdivision and Lennox Township requesting a waiver of a driveway permit.
Here's a copy of the survey map. Dorothy Gates, Three Cross State Route 235 by Nicholson P.A. has proposed two lot minor subdivisions of their land. One lot is developed and the other lot is being developed. It is located at Three Cross State Route 235 in Lennox Township. In reviewing the plans, the following items are called to your attention. One, by definition, this is a minor subdivision. Two, application affidavit of ownership and filing fee of NBC. Three survey maps were prepared by Frank H. Gardner, PLS, and depict the following. A, Lot Two contains two point eighty-three hundred acres and has an average worth of two hundred and seventeen feet, one hundred and fifty feet required. This is a proposed lot with house, existing sand round system and water line. It has an existing garage. B, Lot One remaining lands contains two point eighty-three hundred acres and has an average worth of two hundred and seventeen feet, one hundred and fifty feet required. This is a developed lot with house, subject system, existing spring and driveway. C, contours, wetlands, sort of classification, creek, building setbacks, site location and contiguous landowners were all shown on the survey map. Four, Mrs. Gates is requesting a waiver on a driveway permit for Lot Two at the present time. Once the subdivision has been approved and needed in her name, she will acquire a driveway permit for Lot Two located on State Route 235. Five, the Lennox Township Supervisors were notified on September seventh, 2012. Our office has received a municipality report form from Lennox Township Supervisors on October second, with no objections. Staff recommendation is grant approval of the waiver on the driveway permit and grant final approval of the subdivision plan for the two residential lots.
Why is it that she won't ever, I think what you said is, on Lot Two, she'll apply later for the... But why won't she?
The permit officer will not issue a driveway permit.
So this, this waiver that she wants now is just temporary?
This is a catch twenty-two. The new Penda Permanent Officer, not just this instance, she will have, if you approve this, you'll have more coming before you. His thinking is that unless the land is private, is separately owned, he won't, he won't issue a driveway permit. That has never been the case with Penda before. It is this individual that's making the rules. We asked him to put this in writing and he wouldn't. So he's asking, they are asking the planning commission to waive your requirement for a driveway permit to satisfy this person's standard operating procedure, which he won't put in writing.
But the lot, you'll have two lots instead of one?
Yeah, it's a minor subdivision.
In separate names, in different names or in the same name? In different names or in the same name?
Eventually, it'll be in someone else's name. He, he says, this permanent, new permanent officer says that I won't issue permits for this one to other ones that we have in or will have in until they're in separate names. He's saying to you, to the planning commission...
But if Mrs. Gates has the same name on both, he won't accept that either.
Okay. Separately deeded, forget the name, separately deeded.
You know how I feel about driveway permits.
Yeah, you have not done this before. Planning commission has not done this before.
No.
Remember the guy out in Locky, right? But just turned around there for fifteen years.
Just because this guy doesn't want to do it, I mean...
Exactly, that's my point.
Let somebody, let somebody put the pressure on him to go to his lot.
Exactly.
You know how I'm feeling.
He's saying to the planning commission, I won't do what everybody else before me has done. You have to waive your requirement.
What he's saying is he won't do his job.
I don't know what his job is, but this has, this has not been the case with any other permanent officer that we've had here in the twenty-two years I've been here.
I think the landowner needs to put some pressure on him.
I move. I move we grant the waiver as requested or as recommended by staff.
I think we ought to drop the requirement for all driveway permits. That's, I have nothing against the driveway permits, but it's this, um, what do you call it?
Access covenant.
Access covenant that they want you to sign. And that's, basically, we're enforcing that rule for them. What is it ever done for any of the land use planning driveway permits? Well, they're always saying, save it. If we down away with it, it won't hurt, and I don't hold anything, it would hurt.
Well, the only thing you can look at would be the sight line. We have drivers who may require the stuff.
Yes, absolutely. But I think also we should contact the Pennsylvania Planning Association and ask them if they have any experience in this.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I, I, yeah, you're correct, right. I can say, though, Sean's position, the municipal planning code, which is the state law that governs what we do here, only requires a statement on the map saying that a driveway permit is needed. Doesn't, you know, the, this planning commission has always required a driveway permitted, or not always, I shouldn't say that. They didn't back in nineteen, what was the one, we just had down, that was eighty-eight, I think, or eighty-six? So maybe since, maybe around nineteen ninety, I don't remember. That's what the state requires anyway, a statement on the map, the driveway permit is required. That's what the municipal planning code recommends.
Well, the next one that comes in here...
We've got two more like this.
We're gonna have to do the same thing as I was saying, press it.
Joe Kemp has got one of them, and Mike Berkeley, Attorney Berkeley, has another. That's two that I know of.
Well, this person basically is putting us in a nowhere position.
They're putting us in a bad position, and who's gonna know five years from now when she sells that lot to Harry that that was just a temporary variance or temporary driveway permit? And then she's got, we talked about that before, we'll never be able to police it.
No.
I just, I, I don't agree with them, I either, they, I, I'm sorry, that's just the way I feel. I, I don't think we should give a variance, that's my opinion. Because I, then we're gonna, the next one that comes up, we're gonna have to say, well, whether you like it or not, well, we gave, we gave this Gates some variance, we gotta give them a variance. I, I don't know, I don't agree with them, but that's just, that's my opinion. There's a motion on the floor, does anybody, Kathy made a motion that we accept it? Does anybody, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. It's approved.
This is the first of six plans we have from NEP Cell Core in Forest City that, as you know, NEP has installed quite a number of cell towers throughout the county. So, there for a while, they had to upgrade some permitting, improve some licensing that they had. Now they're back towards pushing to build some cell towers, so about six plans coming before the planning commission. And I understand there's another one submitted to the Silver Lake Planning Commission. I haven't gotten that one yet, I'll give you a comment when I do, I'll bring that to you. NEP Cell Core Incorporated, seven twenty Main Street, Forest City, has proposed a telecommunication, public communications tower on lands of Robert and Faith Garza and Pollockham Township. The tower is located off of State Route eight fifty-eight, one point seven miles south of the intersection of One Center Road and State Route eight fifty-eight. In reviewing the plans, the following items are called to your attention. Number one, by definition, this is a commercial development. Number two, application affidavit of ownership and filing fee have been received. Number three, site development plans were prepared by Robert Hardner, P.E. of Keystone Associates, Land in New York. Number four, NEP Cell Core proposes to erect a one hundred and eighty-foot lattice communications tower and an eight-feet-by-ten-feet equipment platform located within a sixty-feet-by-sixty-foot compound on a hundred-foot-by-a-hundred-foot leased area. An eight-foot-high chain link fence topped with barbed wire will surround the tower area. The tower will not be lighted. Number five, access to the site is by way of gravel drive off of State Route eight fifty-eight, fourteen hundred and five feet long and twelve feet wide, within a twenty-foot easement. Maintenance of the access drive will be the responsibility of NEP Cell Core as detailed in note C thirteen on sheet one hundred, or C one hundred. Number six, a driveway permit is required for the private access drive off of State Route eight fifty-eight. Number seven, propagation study map shows the coverage area of the proposed tower indicating the need for the tower in the chosen location. Number eight, a copy of the lease agreement is included in the plan submission. Number nine, note fifteen on sheet C one oh one contains provisions for removal of the tower if and when it is no longer in use. Number ten, the plan shows the setback line and tower fall distance, which is a hundred and ninety-five feet, in accordance with the ordinance requirement. Number eleven, the total disturbed area is approximately zero point four seven acres. Based on this figure, the Conservation District has determined that no approval of the erosion and sediment control plan is required. And number twelve, the Pollockham Township Supervisors were notified on September twenty-seventh in their regular meeting once held on October first, we didn't get anything from them. Staff recommendation, grant preliminary approval of the NEP Cell Core Garza commercial development in the Pollockham Township, condition on receipt of a driveway permit for State Route eight fifty-eight and receipt of the municipality report form from the Pollockham Township Supervisors within the commission's allowable review period. Uh, there's another issue which I didn't, I thought was going to be taken care of. John and I have talked about it, a lot of these cell towers are in John's area. And John found, noted something on the map, uh, on one of the site development sheet, there is survey information, meets and bounds, courses and distances for the leased area. And the maps are only signed and stamped by a, an engineer, New York State engineer. And according to state law, if they're going to have courses and distances, I hope I'm saying this correct, John, if they're going to have courses and distances, it, it has to be, um, signed and sealed by a registered Pennsylvania surveyor. So I talked to Keystone Associates, a guy named Tim Bailey, and he said that what Keystone, what they would do is take that information off of these sheets here and give us, similar to what we've seen in the past few months, uh, one of the, one of the Bluestone Gathering sites, they gave us a separate survey map that could just be put in the file, because I said, that's good information to add that, those courses and distances for the owner of the property or for anybody in the future that needs to see that. But the map that is recorded, the site development map, should not have something that's illegal on it in Pennsylvania. So, I have expected to have, I really expected to have the map by today, but they haven't submitted it yet. That's where we're at.
Did you get his email?
I never got his email today.
What are they gonna do about the driveway permit here?
Yeah, I know. Same guy.
Is this a lease?
It's a lease, yeah. So there's not gonna be any change of property ownership? Good question.
He's waiting for, he's waiting for the receipt, the receipt for the driveway permit or the other one, for variance.
Yeah, I mean, this still requires private, according to our ordinance, but what John's saying, this is no, there's not gonna be any property changing hands. There's not gonna be a new lot. It's a lease. Good question.
Well, this is just down the road from me, and this might possibly give me cellphone service.
Is there any issue with the, with the lighting?
If it's over two hundred feet, it has to be lit, according to... That's why they stay at a hundred and eighty percent.
That's what I thought.
Mm-hmm. They're all a hundred and eighty, everyone we'll see tonight is a hundred and eighty. But, um, I talked to this guy, Shannon Worley, is the, is the... But I talked to this guy, Shannon Worley, is the, is the, Tim Sterns, if I may. Tim Sterns was the fellow that brought these around, used to work for NEP. He moved on to another company, so the new person is Shannon Worley. And he called, yeah, he expected to come to the meeting last night, and of course, we changed the meeting, he had another commitment tonight. But he said that we were supposed to have these new maps, John, with the information taken off of them by tonight, and don't have them yet. Got a call from Tim Bailey today, and he said, "I'm sending you an email I never received," so I noticed that that's not true. But what I told Mr. Worley this morning was, I would ask the planning commission if, like, say you gave, and they're all the same. Every one we have, they're all set back, same information on them. If the planning commission would consider, once the towers are built, you know, a lot of times we'll require an as-built plan, if it could be handled at that stage, you know, we're not gonna record it with that information without a registered Pennsylvania surveyor.
I don't have any problem with that, it was, you know, you give the final approval.
Yeah, they're not gonna get final approval if it's not changed.
We're waiting for them to get a driveway permit too.
Yeah, that could take a while. I may have them tomorrow, I only have them Friday, but I don't have them tonight.
Now, this is not final approval.
No, this is conditional preliminary action.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion, we have preliminary approval, looking through the staff's requirement.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Preliminary approval is granted.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. NEP Cell Core, INC., 720 Main Street, Forest City, has proposed a tower communications tower on lands of Mayor and Dr. Grotenor in Auburn Township. The tower is located off of T-21 Dean Road, approximately 210 miles west of State Route 267 in Auburn Center. In reviewing the plan, the following items are called to your attention. One, by definition, this is commercial development. Two, application affidavit of ownership and filing fee have been received. Three, site development plans were prepared by Robert Harner, P.E. of Keystone Associates, Binghamton, New York. Four, NEP Cell Core proposes to erect a 180-foot lattice communications tower and an eight-foot-by-10-foot equipment platform located within a 60-foot-by-60-foot compound on 100-foot-by-100-foot leased area. An eight-foot-high chain-link fence topped with barbed wire will surround the tower area. The tower will not be lighted. Five, access to the site is by way of an existing gravel drive off of Dean Road, 715 feet long and 12 foot wide, within a 20-foot easement. Maintenance of the access drive will be the responsibility of NEP Cell Core as detailed in Note C-13 on Sheet C-100. Six, a driveway permit is not needed since it is existing driveway as per the township. Seven, a propagation study map shows the coverage area of the proposed tower, indicating the need for the tower in the chosen location. Eight, a copy of the lease agreement is included in the plan submission. Nine, Note 15 on Sheet C-101 contains provisions for removal of the tower if and when it is no longer in use. Ten, the plan shows the setback line and the tower fall distance, 195 feet, in accordance with the ordinance requirement. Eleven, the total disturbed area is approximately 4,700 acres. Based on this figure, the Conservation District has determined that no approval of the erosion and sediment control plan is required. Twelve, the Auburn Township supervisors were notified on September 27th and returned in the municipality report form on October 4th for no objections. Staff recommendation is grant preliminary approval of the NEP Cell Core Grotenor Commercial Development in Auburn Township.
Anybody have any questions? Is there a motion on the floor?
Show move, Jim.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Okay. NEP Cell Core Incorporated, 720 Main Street, Forest City, has proposed a telecommunications tower on lands of Paul and Susan Brotenor in Brooklyn Township. The tower is located off of State Route 2011 in Brooklyn Township, across from the Girl Scout camp at Ely Lake. In reviewing the plans, the following items are called to your attention. Number one, by definition, this is commercial development. Number two, application affidavit of ownership and filing fee have been received. Number three, site development plans were prepared by Robert Harner, P.E. of Keystone Associates, Binghamton, New York. Number four, NEP Cell Core proposes to erect 180-foot lattice communications tower and eight-by-10 equipment platform located within a 60-foot-by-60-foot compound on 100-foot-by-100-foot leased area. An eight-foot-high chain-link fence topped with barbed wire will surround the tower area, and the tower will not be lighted. Access to the site is by way of a gravel drive off of State Route 2011, 630 feet long and 12 feet wide, within a 20-foot easement. Maintenance of the access drive will be the responsibility of NEP Cell Core as detailed in Note C-13 on Sheet C-100. A driveway permit is required for the private access drive off of State Route 2011. Number seven, a propagation study map shows the coverage area of the proposed tower, indicating the need for the tower in the chosen location. Number eight, a copy of the lease agreement is included in the plan submission. Number nine, Note 15 on Sheet C-101 contains provisions for removal of the tower if and when it is no longer in use. Number 10, the plan shows the setback line and the tower fall distance, 195 feet, in accordance with the ordinance requirement. Number 11, the total disturbed area is approximately 0.55 acres. Based on this figure, the Conservation District has determined that no approval of the erosion and sediment control plan is required. Number 12, Brooklyn Township supervisors were notified on September 27th, and their regular meeting was held on October 18th. Staff recommendation is to grant preliminary approval of the NEP Cell Core Brotenor Commercial Development in Brooklyn Township. Condition on receipt of a driveway permit for State Route 2011 and receipt of the municipality report form from the Brooklyn Township supervisors within the commission's allowable review period.
Anybody have any concerns?
The only comment I have on any of these, I think, is we talk about Note 15 on 101. And basically it says that they will remove, required to remove the tower within one year from the abandonment. Yeah, but there's, doesn't seem to be any, both they don't do that, or they don't, there's no binding or anything where it's...
I know one township, Thompson Township, required that in their ordinance.
That was a concern we had about abandoning, we were there and having rust that we had put in there, we're gonna take it down, then here.
I think that's fine, I think that's fine.
I remember back when NEP was doing this the first time, we were pulled by NEP, take it for what it's worth, but they said there is salvage value in the...
You said any local guy would gladly take it down because it's on lease line.
We have a cellphone tower, an NEP, and it is, excuse me, it's in their lease, how they will take it down and when.
Yeah, actually, I have the leases here.
It's in the lease.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Show move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Trying to answer your question, in the lease it says, "Within 120 days of termination of this agreement," the lease agreement, "the tenant," which is NEP Cell Tower, "will remove all such improvements, footings, foundations, and concrete to a depth of one foot below grade." So they're only giving themselves 120 days, we give them here. Oh, this is right apple in Joseph Township.
NEP Cell Core Incorporated, 720 Main Street, Forest City, has proposed a tower communications tower on lands of Rag Apple LLC in Joseph Township. The tower is located off of a private road off of State Route 3029 in Joseph Township, approximately 125 miles southeast of Thirteenth. In reviewing the plan, the following items are called to your attention. One, by definition, this is a commercial development. Two, application affidavit of ownership and filing fee have been received. Three, site development plans were prepared by Robert Harner, P.E. of Keystone Associates, Binghamton, New York. Four, NEP Cell Core proposes to erect a 180-foot lattice communications tower and an eight-by-10-foot equipment platform located within a 60-by-60-foot compound on 100-foot-by-100-foot leased area. An eight-foot-high chain-link fence topped with barbed wire will surround the tower area. The tower will not be lighted. Five, access to the site is by way of a gravel drive off of a private road, 645 feet long and 12 foot wide, within a 20-foot easement. Maintenance of the access drive will be the responsibility of NEP Cell Core as detailed in Note C-13 on Sheet C-100. Six, a driveway permit was issued for the private road at the time of the subdivision in 2006. Seven, a propagation study map shows the coverage area of the proposed tower, indicating the need for the tower in the chosen location. Eight, a copy of the lease agreement is included in the plan submission. Nine, Note 15 on Sheet C-101 contains provisions for removal of the tower if and when it is no longer in use. Ten, the plan shows the setback line and tower fall distance, 195 feet, in accordance with the ordinance requirement. Eleven, the total disturbed area is approximately 6,300 acres. Based on this figure, the Conservation District has determined that no approval of the erosion and sediment control plan is required. Twelve, the Joseph Township supervisors were notified on September 27th and returned in the municipality report form on October 9th for no objections. Staff recommendation is grant preliminary approval of the NEP Cell Core Rag Apple LLC Commercial Development in Joseph Township.
I was jamming this other street corner tower that's constructed, I think most of it is not approved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Preliminary approval is given to the Rag Apple LLC, Government Development, in Pollock Township.
NEP Cell Core Incorporated, 720 Main Street, Forest City, has proposed a telecommunications tower on lands of Theon D. Incorporated in Middletown Township. The tower is located off of Township Route 547, Alfred Jones Road, approximately 8 tenths of a mile east of State Route 858 and 1 mile south of Middletown Center. In reviewing the plans, the following items are called to your attention. Number one, by definition, this is a commercial development. Number two, application affidavit of ownership and filing fee have been received. Number three, site development plans were prepared by Robert Harner, P.E. of Keystone Associates, Binghamton, New York. Number four, NEP Cell Core proposes to erect a 180-foot lattice communications tower and an eight-foot-by-10-foot equipment platform located within a 60-foot-by-60-foot compound on 100-foot-by-100-foot leased area. An eight-foot-high chain-link fence topped with barbed wire will surround the tower area, the tower will not be lighted. Number five, access to the site is by way of an existing gravel drive off of Alfred Jones Road. 20-foot easement is proposed, which will contain the existing and redirected portion of the access drive. Maintenance of the access drive will be the responsibility of NEP Cell All those opposed, same sign. Review and comment, Act one seventy, subdivision and land development. Minor subdivisions and additions, Route ten twenty-six twelve, Hankley, Brian, Teresa, Hankley Real Estate, Great Bend Township, three lots, remaining lands, five point eight-one acres, approved ten, ten, twelve. Is there a motion? Minor subdivision. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minor subdivisions and additions, Route ten twenty-six twelve was approved. Minor subdivisions, new lots, Route ten twenty-six twelve, there's five. Andwick, Peter and Nancy, Robin. Mara State, William Goff. Kern, Dibble.
Major subdivisions, new lots, approved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minor subdivisions, new lots, Route ten twenty-six twelve was approved. Minor subdivisions, new lots, or, excuse me, major subdivisions, new lots, there is none at this time, and there is no new land development. Next thing we can add to is public comment. If you raise your hand, I'll, I'll address you and you address me.
I just, the areas of your fellow from Pendot has a name?
It does.
I don't know. I'd like to explore with the Pendot people.
Well, if you, say, if you were to ask me who the Pendot permit specialist is, it's Sal Donato, or not specialist, permit, fellow, title, he's.
Permit officer.
Officer, I guess, you know.
He's located over in the highway shed.
Any more comments?
I'd like to know what's in the Rain for Rent containers. Is it just water that they're using, or are they using any industrial fluids that they're cleaning out of their, like frac fluids?
Todd, can you answer that?
No.
No to what?
The same as they have been, except that they will occur indoors rather than outside. Number seven, the erosion and sediment control plan has been submitted to the Soil Conservation District Office. Number eight, the stormwater control plan is included with the plan. A detention pond is proposed to handle stormwater from the site. Number nine, Gibson Township Supervisors were notified on October twenty-second and their next tour is scheduled for November fifth. Staff recommendation is grant preliminary approval of the Shager Rain for Rent Commercial Development in Gibson Township, conditioned on receipt of approval of the Erosion and Sediment Control Plan from the Conservation Department Office. And we see a municipality report form from the Gibson Township Supervisors within the commission is allowable to be graded. The operation is already taking place there, it's just that they're building, they want to build a couple of buildings to get stuff out of the rain, I guess, right?
Again, this is, uh, bearings and distances on this map, and just an engineer's signature, as far as I can see.
Uh, who did the surveys?
We had the survey, it was done by Scott Williams. And, uh, the bearings and distances that are on there are reflective of, basically a reflection of his work. If those need to be removed, we can remove those, make reference to his survey.
That's what I was going to ask Ken, John, is it, is, could Todd put a reference to Scott's work on here? Is that legal?
One way to do it, but it'd be better if you could get a copy of the map from Scott and bring it in so that...
Yeah, I have a copy of that.
You could have it in the, in the file.
In this file. We, we would have that, because he did a subdivision, Shager did a subdivision.
We already have a copy of it.
We would have it, but we could certainly put one, if you have an extra or...
Yeah, I can provide you with...
However you want him to provide, maybe Scott could get us an extra.
And it would still be a good idea to put a note on here that it was from his survey.
Yeah, there's a note on there, I believe.
Really?
It came from his, uh, I think it's on the front page there.
Okay.
Note, uh, one or two, uh, four.
Todd, was that septic system that's on there, was that, on this, the Rain for Rent of this property, was that septic system the one that, was it a new septic system, I guess is what I'm asking you?
That was built in, uh, twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten, okay.
Approved by the Con has built in two thousand and ten.
Do you want to discuss what else is going to happen later on, the spring possibly, or?
Um, that's up in the air, I don't want to miss anything.
When we met with Todd in our office and discussed this, there was some, some discussion about, they might do a new septic system, you were saying?
Uh, that's possible.
Face our office building or something.
Right.
What's the nature, excuse me, of the sewage?
Pardon?
What's the nature of the sewage that's being treated?
Uh, it's just regular, um, from, uh, it's not industrial or, it's not industrial waste.
It's just residential?
Basically residential, or, uh, it's generated by the workers on the site, calculated based upon the number of employees. Anybody else have any concerns?
So, is that moved from Ken?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, you should have a copy of the map put in the file, through, you know, to verify.
Should I not put those meets and bounds on there, John?
Technically, an engineer's not supposed to do anything with this area.
Right.
You know, that was surveyor's signature.
Okay. I won't put those on the plans anymore.
Well...
It's not meant to represent the, uh...
Survey.
The survey, uh, as noted in the note.
I'd like to see the distances on there, to know that.
You know, if you put anything on there, you put area, you're, it's the same thing.
That area?
Yeah, you calculate area.
That count.
That's the surveyor's view.
I'll get to your, we had to ask Todd a question, this dealt with his. I'll get the audience's questions and communications. Is there any concerns? Or yes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Rebooting approval is given to the Shager Rain for Rent Commercial Development Gibson Okay, Act one seventy, review and comment. The first thing we have is area marine cabin, uh, three lots, literally township. Review and comment, recommend final approval. Hankley Park, Clifford Estates, five lots, minor subdivision, area township, review and comment, recommend final approval. What we should review? Does everybody compare with those? Gas representation. Three second.
Also, I guess.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Review and comment, Act one seventy, group. Subdivision and land development, uh, have had... Minor subdivisions and additions through ten twenty-six twelve. Hankley, Brian, Teresa, Hankley Real Estate, Great Bend Township, three lots, remaining lands, five point eight one acres, approved ten, ten, twelve. Is there a motion? Minor subdivision. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minor subdivisions and additions through ten twenty-six twelve is approved. Minor subdivisions, new lots through ten twenty-six twelve, there's five. Andy, Peter, Nancy, Robin, Luke. Mara State, William Goff, and Karen Dibble.
Minor subdivisions, new lots, they approved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minor subdivisions, new lots through ten twenty-six twelve approved. Minor subdivisions, new lots, or, excuse me, major subdivisions, new lots, there is none at this time, and there is no new land development. Next thing we can add to is public comment. If you raise your hand, I'll, I'll, I'll address you, and you address me.
I just, the areas of your fellow from Pendott has a name?
It does. I don't know.
I'd like to explore with the Pendott people.
Uh, well, if you, say, if you were to ask me who the Pendott permit specialist is, it's, uh, Sal Donato, or, not specialist, permit, uh, fellow, title of, he's, he's an officer, I guess, you know.
He's located over in the highway shed.
Any more comments?
I'd like to know what's in the Rain for Rent containers. Is it just water that they're using, or are they using any industrial fluids that they're cleaning out of their, like frac fluids?
Todd, can you answer that?
No.
No to what?
No, I'm, I can't answer that. I don't know what it is.
What does it, what does it do for the, well?
I was let, uh, I understand that it's clean water, as far as I know, but that's, uh, it's, uh, on, at liberty to say.
That was under the assumption it was clean water too, or, or clear water. I didn't, I don't know that it is or isn't, sir.
My question is whether those tanks that are, um, Rain for Rent are being cleaned at that facility, and what is being done to those tanks at those, at that particular facility in Gibson Township. I think it's something you may want to look into before you approve it. Or ask the, uh, the architect, what, what, what does this?
Yeah, what is, was approval of a land layout have to do with that?
They're responsible for the sewage landing.
In Gibson, no, Con gets it.
Did you have to direct those questions to Todd?
The other agency that might be necessary to ask about that might be the DEP, like that as well. If it's associated with, um, horizontal fracturing or something like that, or what the water's being used for. If it's residual water or if it's fresh water, is the question.
It wouldn't be us that had to address that, we're land development, that has nothing to do with us.
You're talking about sewage.
We don't.
You don't regulate this?
No.
I'm a little concerned, because I do live in Gibson Township. How can you be approving something for land development and don't know what they're developing on that land? I mean, I was under the assumption that Rain for Rent was, was clear water that was being used to frac or whatever they're doing at that site. But if the gentleman here cannot specify what's being done, I think that's a big problem. It could be, that'd be an environmental problem and concern that it is right along the major waterway, where Rain, you know, where Rain for Rent is stored. I, I have a hard time approving land development when we don't know what they're doing on that land. I think it should be more specific if we're going to approve development, especially when we're dealing with chemicals or any kind of solvent that we don't know what to use on. Mr. Templeton, then should we give approval first by DEP what they're doing before we approve the development?
Our ordinance does require that, but not as a condition of, our ordinance doesn't require that as a condition of planning commission approval. What you're talking about, many people in this county can, uh, confuse zoning and subdivision land development. Subdivision and land development addresses buildings, that's it. Doesn't, doesn't regulate what goes on in the buildings or in the, you know, containers or whatever. If you want to control the activity of the site, you have to have zoning. Gibson Township had the opportunity to adopt the zoning ordinance and dropped down.
How does zoning, uh, control that?
Zoning would, would, you know, uh, regulate the activity, whether that activity, that specific activity, is allowed on that piece of land. Whereas the land development only regulates how a building sits on, and then the setback should be heard tonight about talking about parking setbacks and things like that. That's all that this does. It's very limited.
So, basically, we have no idea what's happening in Gibson Township as far as chemicals being used?
And, and even if we knew, I don't, I don't believe the planning commission could make a, make a judgment on that. It's, it's how it's, how the buildings sit on the land, that's it.
Then who's responsible?
An access, and, well...
Who's responsible down the line?
Um, I guess DEP, you know, as far as their activity, Rain for Rent is, I'm assuming, I, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm assuming that there are, there are permitted activity for, I don't know. But I would think DEP would, would know that, you know, just like DEP, um, regulates the frac, you know, frac fluids and, you know, disposition of that, I would assume. I don't know that for a fact, but...
Would the county have those records of those permits?
No, because the county...
It would just be DEP that has the records?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's where I would turn, just to see what, what, you know, what kind of permits there are there, for what. It's, I mean, we, I personally tried, the planning commission has, has been trying to get municipalities to adopt zoning, and we had, um, twelve and six, eighteen municipalities with the zoning ordinance in hand, ready to adopt. And people came out of the woodwork at meetings and said, "You can't adopt that because you can't tell me how tall my grass can be or what color I can paint my house, and that's in that ordinance," which wasn't true at all. But they scared people, they scared the, the township people, um, you know, out of adopting this, and it's, it's really a shame, because, boy, that was years ago, before gas business started here. We could really use that right now. And it's not too late, I mean, they could still, um, those municipalities could still, uh, adopt those zoning ordinance, maybe with a few changes or something, but it's, it's still possible.
Gibson Township also had their final, uh, public meeting for the adoption of zoning there to go along with the clear water around that watershed, and they were going to adopt it the night, the building was full, and I was there, and, uh, there was so much opposition that they just went through the whole project and just...
No support for it?
If, uh, this is more for what people are they're concerned here. If there is clean activities of those tanks, um, one of the TV shows on Discovery Channel, Dirty Jobs, they actually had, like, rope in the tanks cleaning. It was either two thousand eight, two thousand nine, it was either episode eight or nine. It was, it's four different, four different episodes, I can boil it down to. It's been a while since I've seen it, but, you know, this is going back four or five year, four years.
Cleaning all specific tanks?
Their cleaning tanks came from the burnout shale. And there was salts in them that, that built up, they had to clean them out with sand, have the proper foods and ventilation for them breathing, and, um, and then actually washing it out, and then putting like, uh, Rhino liners, they would put in the back of your truck and then inside, all the little cross members inside those tanks. So, it was pretty informative, it was a long time ago. And I think the only way you could probably get it is DVD now. Might be on the internet, might not.
And why would you need to have to line it with Rhino liner and use PPE, personal protective equipment, if it's just fresh water?
Actually, when I see that, or I see these, this old house, every once in a while, I
see them doing asbestos removal. Um, up here, I can tell you right now, I know there's engineers from Susco County that have designed asbestos removal projects, and they didn't have an asbestos designer's license. So, you know, it's one of those things, you know, there's a lot of this kind of books, you know, going back into the early eighties, it's been updated a little bit through the federal regulations, and then reflected in the states. Hardly anybody files it.
Do you want your children exposed to asbestos on a baby project in a school, if they're done not following the regulations?
You're addressing...
But I don't want to digress, I apologize.
Okay.
It's, you know, I could get one later on that, but, and, let's just say, I have the regulations in my car for asbestos, so...
Any other, any other questions?
You go ahead, you go.
Yeah, hi, my name is Paul Carpin, and I was looking over the director's report, and four of you visited the, uh, three compressor stations that are operated by Williams. And, uh, I would just be curious, as the, had, the three, uh, four gentlemen that went there, uh, any comments or that you experienced or would like to, uh, be public about that visit?
I was one of them, I was.
Actually, in the report, we talked about four people, and then after the report was written and sent out, uh, eight members of the planning commission visited.
Okay.
Compressor station.
And can you give us anything to the public about the experience that you had?
Uh, we went, the four of us went to the Zick plant, and three of us actually went to Lathrop plant.
That was the first we...
We walked, we got permission, we saw a man named Josh, I can't think of his last name right now, he's the operator at the plant, we went on the back, we talked with him, uh, we carried on a normal conversation. And then we went down to the nearest property line, and, uh, we couldn't hear the plan at all.
Now, this is the Zick plant, which one?
The Zick plant. We couldn't hear the plan at all. We could hear a dog barking, I could hear the wind blowing. Then we went over, uh, over to the Lathrop plant, uh, then went right up to the plant.
The front side of the plant?
The front side of the plant.
Facing south, okay.
I guess it's...
Yeah, it's facing south.
The property owner.
Yes.
But we also, we went on the other side.
When they had, I didn't get on the tour.
Yeah, that's where you went, yeah.
I was on the tour, I was on one too. But on the Lathrop one, um, where the trailers are out front, they're, they're on that side, we could carry a normal conversation.
Right.
We went down to the first bend in the road, which is still on that property.
Mm-hmm.
And you couldn't hear the plan at all.
Okay.
I couldn't hear it.
Right, I agree.
But I know I didn't have a decibel meter or anything like that.
No, I agree.
I approved the, to give you a read, but I couldn't hear, I couldn't, and the nearest property would be, down myself further.
Further would be worse.
All right, now, uh, back in, I think it was February of two thousand nine or ten, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there was a planning commission meeting, and those three stations were excluded from a decibel reading...
Right.
...requirement of, I think it was fifty decibels at the time. Is there any reason why those three stations were excluded?
Because of the date of the ordinance. This ordinance was adopted January twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven, that included those new provisions for the decibel level. The Lathrop, Teal...
Teal.
Which you're going to talk about.
I'm going to talk about the Lathrop.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Lathrop and Teal, I thought I saw, yeah, there's Ron Teal back there.
Um, and, um, Chief one, Brendan, Brandon Teal, I believe.
Those were the three that were given final approval before, uh, the ordinance changed, before the commissioners, at the time when the planning commission was working on decibel levels, but it wasn't adopted into the ordinance at that time.
Is there anything, then, that regulates noise from those?
From those three? No, unfortunately.
Is there anything that can be done to regulate them?
No, because the ordinance clearly states that this, this regulates activities from the date of this ordinance.
Okay.
And what is the date? What's the date again?
January twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven. Yeah, it's not retroactive. Again, I'll go back to my soapbox, get on the soapbox about zoning. If you had zoning, you could go back and, and correct that type of stuff.
Yeah, because, um, I live on Fitchell Road, and so does Jerry. Fitchell Road is on the, is parallel to Route twenty-nine, and, uh, my house is approximately three thousand feet from the compressor station. I cannot see the station. Uh, Jerry has a line of sight for the station, and I've been taking decibel readings, uh, recently, because I, I've been, I've been working with Helen Humphries, uh, you know, talking to her about the problems and stuff like that. So, I'm just trying to gain knowledge, because I moved here thirty years ago. I lived in a, in a farm community, that's why I came here. And now that's devastated. I, I have decibel readings at my house that run from, at any time, from fifty to seventy decibels. Uh, Jerry's, uh, is, goes up to eighty decibels. And Jerry can't even sleep in his house on the side that faces the compressor station.
How can you say that you couldn't hear any noise from the station?
Hold on.
Yes.
He's talking first, I'll address him in a second.
Okay. So, uh, he's, he's running into problems, uh, personal problems, physical problems. And I've taken the readings from five different locations, and I'd like to submit this to the board.
How are you, sorry?
Yeah.
How are you taking, what are you using?
I'm using a Radio Shack, it's a model thirty-three, uh, twenty-fifty-five, uh, decibel meter. And, uh, I'll tell you right now, when, I, I live north, uh, northwest of the station. If the wind is blowing from the north going south, at my house, I cannot hear it, okay? But if the wind is coming out of the south, or southeast, uh, or southwest a little bit, the noise just filters right down. And, uh, I can lay in bed, and I can hear it running.
Can I ask, what, what kind of noise is it that you're hearing?
Uh, it's a, it's a, it's, on the backside of the station, I know if you witnessed it, there's cooling fans.
Yeah, we were around that.
Yeah, they're ten foot in diameter, and those cooling fans push circulated air to keep those compressors cool. And the, it's a, it's like a motor running. It's a, it's a constant hum, and at times I could attribute, like, there's a delivery truck out in front of the yard. And, uh, and I'm just trying to, I've, I've been working with Helen, and, you know, I'm just trying to, to say, hey, there is a problem, uh, there is a noise, and I, we should address this. Now, the Shields compressor station, which I can see from my house, uh, which is five thousand feet away, uh, that's going to be going online, because they've been working on that, uh, they got the lines in, they haven't got any compressors, they have hydrators in, and I assume that that's going to be a, a potential problem for me as well.
Now, Shields was one that was regulated under this ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. But that doesn't help me with my present noise. I, I, as I said, I, I, I live in a beautiful place, I love it here, but sometimes I wake up in the middle of the night and I can't go back to sleep, because, uh, if you have a noise and you hear it, it just eats at you. You know, something that annoys you, it gets to you after a while. And it's, ever since it went online, I've been, I've been talking to them.
What have you and Helen worked out?
Actually, Helen has been, uh, very receptive. Uh, I've been giving a plant tour, I've been doing this. Uh, as to, uh, the abatement, noise abatement, uh, they are conducting some studies, I talked to Helen last week, and she was going to give me some responses, they were doing an independent study, uh, but I haven't heard anything near. So, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to gain additional knowledge, so that I have, so I can find a direction and which way to go, uh, to, to tell people, people my, my problem.
I can add...
Yeah.
Also, when, you know, actually, it was Paul Carpin, she brought it to our attention, uh, how the problem was in, on, on Fitchell Road, uh, and, um, since that time, which was several months ago, maybe as much as a year ago...
What, my first...
When we first started talking.
It was, uh, probably in, um, eleven, it was probably in, I talked to, before you even started with the company, I was talking to Dave down in, in Tuncanic.
Oh, when I, when we hit both the EMP and the ministry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I was, that was probably January...
Oh, I went for both at the time.
January, in, in January, uh, two thousand eleven?
And, and, uh, that sounds about right. And, um, you know, when, when we had the opportunity, and we had to rebuild Lathrop compressor station, took advantage of that, and, um, talked to Agent Kay, which is our sound consultant, and, uh, they made, they recommended a number of steps to take, uh, to, to minimize the sound that's coming from the station, and, and that's why, and when, when the facility was originally built, it had a thin skin, uh, surrounding it, uh, so, basically, the walls were one layer of sheet metal. Uh, when we, when we rebuilt, we added substantially, and we particularly added, uh, materials that would deal with the sound significantly. Uh, and it's six, about six inches thick, uh, and it's, uh, around all of the sides, and then across the ceiling too, we put additional, um, uh, materials on to damper the sound from the... the ceiling too, we put additional materials on to damper the sound from the exhaust. But, you know, we recognized that that did not have the complete effect that we were hopeful that it would have. Also, there had been, because of some of the work that had been done, a loud whine that Paul brought to my attention. And we were able to correct that. It took a while because the equipment had to be ordered, unfortunately, you can't run down to Home Depot and just pick up this stuff. But we, we were able to solve that. And, and we're continuing to, even, even though we aren't legally obligated to comply with the ordinance, we certainly feel that it's, it's the best thing for everyone, for us, to strive towards that. And we're continuing, we're continuing to do so.
Go ahead, sorry, I'm tired. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, and just, just that we will continue to strive for that. And I, I mean, Paul's been very helpful on making sure we know what the problems are. And very clear about what he's hearing and what impact that has.
Did H and K take a, I'm just curious, did H and K take a TV reading at that plant?
They conducted a sound survey, and, and actually, they conducted the sound survey before, we had the work done to eliminate the whine. And they are the ones who identified the source of that, that noise. And that's one of the reasons we will be able to correct it without, without guessing. I mean, otherwise, it's trial and error, it can, it can be trial and error. And, and we're continuing to work with H and K. Paul mentioned that he had asked when the last H and K study was done, and I don't have any answer for that. Right now.
Now, Paul, when did you take your reading?
I'd like to submit this to the board by night. And I'm sorry, I only have a couple of copies. It's over various times, it's starting on October 11.
Can I write on this, Paul?
Yes, that's your copy, you can do whatever you like. And I started on October 11, and what I did.
Of this year, right?
That's this year, that's correct, 12. And what I did was, the first, it says where the location is, is from my front porch. So I walk out of my front porch, and there's the times and what the, what the sound reading was. And what I did was, I had the sound meter, I threw out the low, I threw out the high, and I took the average in the middle. And Jerry's place, I went to Jerry's place, did the same thing. And then there's, there's David's house down the street, between David and Debbie Miller. I took a reading there. Teddy, Teddy Toma, who lives right on the top of the hill, and who has a direct sight, he can see the plant from that location, that's where the loudest sound is.
Did you give one of these to Helen?
No, I did not.
Could, could, could he submit one?
Tony?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Would you have one, Paul?
Might be helpful.
Tony, do you have a copy here?
I said, Derek.
Could you do that, please? I know there was, there were several meetings back, I think in December 6th, there was a meeting at Montrose High School, where the DEP and Williams, and they conducted an open, open comment. And I commented there at the time, and there were a lot of other people commenting, and these, you know, they said that the, the sound of the compressor station is like just a refrigerator. I said, well, I got a refrigerator running in my bedroom every day. And you gotta realize that noise doesn't stop. If the wind's blowing right, it's constant, it's all the time. And so I did, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to bring things forward, I'm trying to learn. I, I, I feel it's, we can cohabitate, you know, it's, I, I, you know, but I just wanna do something with the sound, because I just think it's, 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 it's objectionable and it gets irritating.
I'd like to talk.
Go ahead.
You said you were there at the Lathrop station, and the birds were singing, and the sky was blue.
I did that.
I think you were in the wrong place. You must've gotten lost. Because I'm half a, half a mile away from that station, and I'm constantly hearing this damn noise.
If I may, Jerry, I, I took a survey, I took, Helen, I had a tour of the plant. If you stand on the south side of the plant where the trailers are in front, and look at the plant, it's, 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 you don't hear it.
That's the great work.
Yeah. You don't hear it. But if you go on the backside, it, there's a considerable difference. And that's where Jerry and myself and the other neighbors that I have, whose addresses are on there, and their names, live and hear. So it's, it's all a matter of direction. Because I go down to Springville in the center of town, you don't hear it. You go past the Lathrop station on 29, you don't hear it. It's, it's a directional noise.
Are you the nearest property to that?
Uh, no, I, I don't know. If, I would have to say you'd, there are properties that are closer. Occupied dwelling, I would think Jerry is the closest occupied dwelling. And he's about 2,500 feet, almost direct line. I'm 3,000 feet away, according to a topographical map. And Ted Toma is about 2,700, maybe 2,800 feet away, and has a direct sight to the plant. And you, you got, you got seven engines with 10-foot cooling fans, and they put out a lot, they, they do tend to be noisy. I know if you walk around the plant, in the backside, when I was there for the tour, I had the earplugs in. So.
Well, but, but the earplugs are for inside, you don't have to wear earplugs.
Uh, it was pretty.
Because when you guys came for the tour.
Yeah.
I know, Pat, you weren't able to join us for that part, but.
At Lathrop, I wasn't, but I was at the ZIC.
Yeah. You'd have to yell it.
Inside.
Inside, yeah.
Yeah.
With earplugs on.
He wants to speak, Maria.
I hear this noise 24 hours a day. In the summer, I can't leave my windows open to sleep, to get fresh air, because this noise is there. Plus the smell. On the weekends, when it's raining, or at night, when the EPA doesn't come around, that's when it smells, it stinks.
What are you smelling, Jerry?
I'm smelling pollution, that's what I'm smelling.
And pollution, you defined it a little bit, a few of them.
Well, you, you define pollution to me.
Jerry, we're trying to work with everybody. We're not, we're not against you. The planning commission isn't against you.
You have to understand, I'm putting up with this for a year or more.
I understand that.
And I shouldn't, I should just be calm?
No, I'm not.
I don't want to be calm, I want something done.
I want you to be in calm at the meeting, that's what I want. We're gonna try to work with you. We're not gonna, we're not here to work against you. We're not here to work against you.
You told me you were there, and you didn't hear nothing. I'm a half a mile away, and I can't sleep.
You didn't hear what I said. We went down to the first curve on that road, and then we couldn't hear the plant.
Yeah.
In front of, in front of the plant. Now, I wasn't behind the plant.
That's the opposite side. Not the side you're in.
Disturbing the peace, that's what it is, and it's against the law.
It's a law.
Disturbing the peace. It's ruining my quality of life. It's taking my real estate property and devaluing it, because if I ever wanted to sell that property, nobody would buy it because of the noise. Are you saying be calm? I'm being calm. You people sound as if there's no problem. No, I went there and the birds were singing. Well, the birds ain't singing by me.
No, Jerry, nobody. You're the only one said the birds weren't singing. And that's what I mean by stay in calm. You have a question?
Yes, I'd like to also say that with all this noise that the people behind this Lathrop station experience, and the odors, you still decided to approve the Shields compressor station? Which is only about, what is it, 5,000 feet?
5,000 feet from my house.
5,000 from your house, so how far from the Lathrop station? That would be 8,000 feet? Because you're about three?
It's, could be about 4,000. Because it's an arc, it's in an arc.
So you're talking less than two miles. You, you decided to approve, and the DEP, another compressor station? Now, isn't that going to emit noise? Now, what kind of noise emission controls and odor emission controls are on the Shields? Do they have better? Now, Williams is here, Helen is here, do they have better insulation, better emission controls than Lathrop and ZIC?
Oh, I'm not an engineer, and I can't speak precisely to, to, to each individual station. I'm not gonna be able to compare the, what I can tell you is that certainly, Williams' controls all comply with DEP requirements. And as, as far as the noise is concerned, with the new facilities that Williams is building, we are taking a number of steps to ensure that the facilities meet the county's requirement.
Which is?
One of the steps we're taking is to have sound surveys conducted before the facility is constructed, so that we know what kind of sound dynamics are occurring at the site, and we'll have a better idea of what steps need to be taken to ensure that we do meet the county's requirements.
Now, on the Shields compressor, you have the Shields house very close to that compressor. And do you know how many feet it is from the compressor station that's being built right now? The Shields house? Because that'll be the closest building possibly for the 50 decibel reading.
Yeah, and, and, often, I don't know the distance. I'm sure this project manager would know that. But the Shields sold us the property, I'm dealing with that, a compressor station is being built.
That would be considered participating property, and the ordinance talks about non-participating property.
So that would be considered participating, and so it won't come under the ordinance? The Shields house? Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
And why is it considered participating?
They're the ones that sold the land and leased the land.
Leased, yeah. I think they leased it, did they lease it?
I, I, I'm not sure if they leased it or they sold it, but they're, either way, they're participating.
Well, there's another house, there's the Shields house, and then across the road, there's another house. I don't know who owns that one.
Keeping in mind, the ordinance is explicit about what the obligation is on, on Williams' part. And that is that we are to meet the 60 decibels.
Fifty decibels.
Fifty deci.
Excuse me, I apologize, 50 decibels at, at the property line.
Near property line. Not participating property.
So, so that is our obligation. And it doesn't matter if that non-participating property line is 10 feet away or 5,000 feet away.
Also, the county solicitor, when I brought this up to him, because the state law was, the state had passed Act 13. We were getting ready, because we had to, required by the state, to change the ordinance to 55 decibels, it was at the time.
Act 13.
Act 13 is 55 decibels, at the closest occupied, non-participating dwelling. Now, that has since been put on hold, that Act 13, that provision is in court. It'll, it'll probably be passed, but we didn't change the ordinance yet. Or, I should say, the county commissioners didn't change the ordinance, because they're the ones that adopt the ordinance. In discussion with the county solicitor, it was pointed out to me that that requirement at that time was going to be 55 decibels if you hear a stock of pipe, or a non-participating property. Because the only consideration that the planning commission could possibly have. If a thousand feet away, a mile away, the decibel level is 120, nothing you can do about it. Because the ordinance and the state law at that time, you know, what, what was going to be passed, said the nearest dwelling. And that's the only thing that, that the county solicitor said the judge would, would look at. So, you could be a half mile away, and the decibel level, because of the hills and valleys, could be a lot higher. But the only thing they're concerned about is the, you know, the, the closest dwelling. So, that's, that was something that I had to get in my mind, too.
Yeah.
Helen, what, can you, can you make sure that you take, or could you have, I'm asking, could you do it? Your engineering firm, H and K?
Oh, the, the, I'm consulting firm.
Yeah. Take, take that, now, it can't be any spend on the county, because we don't have any money, but would, would you be able to do that? Take it at Jerry's property and Paul's property, to see what the decibel reading is at their property? Would that be something we could do?
I would, I would need to talk to our staff, I, I don't, I, I can't see why it would be a problem, right? But, but I do need to.
Last week, we had another, we had another person complain at that meetings before, and I know, not you, Helen, but one of your coworkers said that the H and K wasn't gonna do that at Gold, last week.
Yeah.
I also want to say that you mentioned the ZIC compressor station, that you were there, and you were able to talk. But the ZIC compressor station, as far as I understand, has no compressors. It's a free.
There, there's three in the building, and two were running the night we were there.
There were two running at that time, because I heard it was a free-flow station. So there are two compressors on that site that were running?
Yeah, we were inside, it's all one.
What you might be figuring out is very often as the compressor stations are based about state first, are allowed to free-flow. And, and so, you know, for a period of time, exactly what you described is, is true. But then, they, they, they are more fully constructed, the compressors are installed, and then of course, it's not just free-flow, it relies on compressors.
So when did the compressors get installed at the ZIC station? When did they get in?
February, February, I think it was during.
I think so. I, I hate saying, I lose track of time terribly, but.
January or February, from what you know?
Yeah, that's when it was, when Alan Schroeder was here asking for final approval.
So then you're saying that if those buildings next to the Shields station, if they're going to the closest building, that's what, non-participating? And if that one is over 55, over 50, or 55?
That would have to be 50, the closest one would have to be 50.
Because now you're talking about Act 13, it says 55.
That's what I was saying.
Act 13 was not passed.
Okay, but let's say it gets passed, let's say it gets passed. Okay, it's under appeal. So if it gets passed, let's say it does, it's anything over 55.
55.
That means what, what are you going to do? What is the county gonna do? How are they going to enforce it?
We can't, under Act 13, the original Act 13 that got disapproved, we can't do anything less than what Act 13 is. That's a state mandate. We, we're, we're done, we can't do anything. We have it at 50 right now.
So let's say, okay, let's say you have it at 50, I'm trying to get an understanding from you, what will you do when people complain? And, and we have a reading.
No, you're saying at the nearest one.
At the nearest one.
I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, if you, you have an ordinance, let's say, now Shields is being worked on, and there's houses right near Shields.
Right.
What are you gonna do if it's over 50, which it has a good chance of possibly being over 50? What are you going to do? How do you enforce these things?
We, we won't approve it unless they.
It won't get final approval.
They won't get final approval.
It won't get final approval, so that means what? You're going to do a test, a noise?
No, they're gonna do the test.
They're gonna do a noise meter test?
Independent, they, not them, an independent, they pay for it.
They pay for it, independent test, before it's completed? At what stage do they do the independent noise? And, and what, and when will you do? Will the compressors be in? Because the compressors will be in at that point? And how many compressors for Shields? Is it four? Is it three?
Doesn't matter, it still has to meet the decibel level.
Right, well, while there's more, the more compressors, the louder it is.
Exactly, but.
And the more sound mitigating measures we have to institute.
So then you will be testing, and the Williams company will test before it's completed, at what stage?
Well, you can't, you can't know what the sound produced is until it's.
Until it's hooked up, right?
It's operating.
Until it's operating.
I mean, how, how do you?
So then you're gonna be operating before final approval? Is that what you're saying?
I have to turn to.
She asked you, is Williams going to do a test?
Well, H and K, our consultant, I shouldn't say H and K, but a, a sound, a certified sound consultant would do that. We would pay for it.
And this is all before final approval? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And then if you don't pass and it's over 50, then you're not going to give, you are not going to give the final approval? Unless they can somehow do something about the sound and keep it?
They have to meet the decimal reading at our ordinance right now. If Act 13, it's 55 decibels if it stays-
If it's Act 13, it's 55.
If it's ours, it's 50. It's the way it is now.
If it stays as the original Act 13.
And then I also understand that just two miles down the road, there's another compressor station being proposed on the Bednash property. So you have within like, what is it, three or four miles, you have Lathrop, you have Shields, and then you're going to have one on Bednash. Every two to four miles, there's a compressor station being proposed by all of this infrastructure that is needed. How are we going to handle in our whole county, as you go and put all these compressor stations along the pipelines, all the noise and all the emissions?
Now, one of, one of the, one of the things that the natural gas industry has brought into the area is the, the infrastructure that, I mean, you're right, is, is necessary to, to move the gas to market. And when we say, where are we moving the gas? We're moving the gas to market, we're moving it to people's homes and, and to businesses. You know, there are compressor stations in the area, the people that have served other pipelines, I mean, that pipelines have been in this area, the Buckeye has been here for decades, the Millenia has been here for decades, the Tennessee Pipeline. But because they weren't, they were built so long ago, before you've ever probably moved here, Vera, people aren't always aware of their facilities. And that's, that's something that, that because there's increased activity and because it's new and because you see the construction process, you're much more aware of it. There's no question about that.
Well, I don't know of any area where people live in the Northeast where they have compressor stations every two to four miles. And that we're supposed to deal with that, with the emissions, the tons of emissions that are allowed by the D E P and the noise, that we have to then live with that and that's going to fill up our county. We have 20, how many do we have now? 20 proposed compressors right now for the county. And that's just the beginning of the infrastructure.
I don't-
I don't know any other place in the, in the country that people have to live every two to four miles with that kind of infrastructure.
I, I don't know that I agree with you. I don't know that either you or I know enough about the infrastructure in the country to, to make that kind of statement.
I would, I'd just like to thank the board for allowing me to give you my condolences and bringing it to our attention. I hope we can work with you. You know, I'm, I'm all for you being comfortable living on your property.
Yeah, thanks.
You hear the birds singing?
Mr. Yehudah, I have the opportunity to go over there and I never met Helen before, but I have to say, I know this is a whole new adventure for everybody up here, but I have to agree with some of the things that were said here with that I came from a much more populous area most of my life. And no, people's quality of life is not taken away with industry. Industry can move in and everybody can cohabitate. And when somebody complains that there's a problem, I think we need to get together and work instead of saying, we don't by law have to meet whatever requirements. But by law also, we shouldn't take people's quality of life away.
We could agree with you more.
So that's why I think what they're asking is that for a year, they've been coming to Williams and all they want is everyone to sit at the table and work together and work and live amongst each other. That's all that people are asking.
And I think, I think that's what we're doing.
I would like to say that. I really would. I am not. I am not anti-gas or moving towards any new structure, but I am anti-taking away people's quality of life and devaluing their homes that they worked hard for. And I think that, you know, CAVI, Williams, everybody, the planning commission and the people that are affected, sit down and come with a, a resolution to this. It might cost you money, but everybody has to live together and grow with this.
I agree.
And I mean, it's been a year. I think there should be a resolution to this very soon.
Well, I'm happy to give you my part and we can get together and we can say the steps that we take.
Well, I think we should be working with these, these people over in that area that have to live with it.
Ma'am, I, I think Paul had said that we should do it. And I think we-
We might mention that.
Yeah.
We made the change to ordinance.
Is it, is it reached the status quo?
There's something there and it's, it sounds like we didn't do anything. We have, yeah.
Tony, what, like Bernie just said, to bring it up, and you, you brought it up right from the very beginning. This all got thrown in our lap.
Correct, absolutely. How this can be perfect?
There was nothing there in the ordinance for any of this. And we as a board got the decibel reading in because of, there was some complaints and concerns about the noise at that time. Now, you know, I'm hearing the smell is out there. I, I know the D E P has clean air permits, you've got to get a clean air permit because I operated boilers. And we have, always had to have, once a year, they'd come in and take stat readings and everything for the, for our permits, an annual permit we'd have to have. So we, we are working towards, we're not, again, we're not against anybody, we're working here for you and we're working here for Williams and everybody. We're trying to do the best, this is all volunteers for the, Eleanor and Bob are full-time employees upstairs, but we, we are all volunteers. And one of the reasons I'm on this, after living in Susquehanna for 24 years, I moved back here because of the memories I had. And this is part of giving back. That's why I'm here tonight, because I'm giving back. Does anybody else have any questions?
Why don't you move up by me?
You're so happy.
Then you can wave your earplugs.
That's not, that's not a question.
Also with Act 14, or Act 13, with the distribution of fees, it's in section 2314G, which is the use of funds. You go all the way down to number 13, one of the allowable uses for, I believe it's the 3.9 million or so. I know the P U C had a little issues where they didn't correctly come up with the numbers when they put the paperwork out earlier this month. And they're redoing it right now. In fact, they're not going to issue, going to issue checks earlier this week. Local or regional planning initiatives under the Act of July 31, 1968, known as Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code. There could be funding provided by the county because I know there's some people are planning on using it for another purpose. And that purpose isn't one of the 13.
I know.
So it's one of those where that could be used. So instead of having us municipalities having to adopt, because of boroughs, I believe it's section 1202, it's, I believe it's a specific powers granted to the borough. And this is in the new Borough Code that got issued this year. I believe it's 20 or 21. One deals with zoning, one deals with cell, or plan development ordinances. We would actually have to adopt what the county had to even enforce it in the borough. I know the townships, they're, what, the township code got, the second class township code, what was it, 2005 it got reissued? There was, I know it hasn't been too many years, but Pete, the borough's been, you know, 1965. So it's one of those things where for us to enforce the county level, there's an issue. And we would actually, we'd actually have to get on a planning commission.
Sure.
And to enforce that.
Hey, anybody else have any questions? Thank you all for coming to the meeting.
Thank you.
I called, I sent it to Matt.
To Matt?
Yeah. He responded. We talked a little.
Are you there?